Good afternoon, everyone. We're getting ready to start the public meeting. If you could silence your cell phones and lower your voice. There you go.
All right. Welcome to today's meeting of City Council. Today's date is Tuesday, October 1st, and we've got a full house. And it looks like it's Lamar Day here today. So today's invocation will be given by Reverend James Peavy House. He is the rector at St. Mark's Episcopal Church. If everyone would please silence your cell phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, in you we live, move, and have our being. Send your Spirit upon our mayor, city council members and staff as they meet to conduct business and lead our city. Increase in them and in us all a passion to seek the common good. In hard and challenging conversations keep us from seeing those disagreeing as a foe. In our lives enable us to be generous in our assumptions of each other. Protect our leaders and us all from the belief that the stewardship of our city is the work of only one person or one group. Where there is confusion, grant an abundance of grace and clarity. Where there is difference, strengthen our instinct to listen first and then engage in discussion and debate. In all that is done to this day, may we continue to see each other as beloved and fellow human beings created by you. Bless our civic leaders and those who call Beaumont home, and together help us seek justice and peace and work for your greater glory. Amen.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Protim Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Thelshaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
Okay, today we have one proclamation and one presentation. And first, we're going to have a proclamation recognizing October 1st, 2024 is Lamar University Athletics' Day. And to celebrate the 2023-2024 Commissioners' Cup winners, accepting will be Mr. Jeff O'Malley, Lamar University Athletic Director, and the host of people that you brought, Mr. O'Malley. So y'all, you're all welcome to come up. And at this time, if you'd come to receive, please. And Pete.
Congratulations. Looking good. I can. Good, yes. Go.
Still do the hurt.
Been here today, too. Thank you, y'all.
Good, good. How are you? Good, good, good. Hello.
Y'all for being here today.
Been here. And you are what?
Can you say a few words if you'd like?
That's the thing, how he read, man.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Turn the... There we go.
There you go. Thank you very much. I know we've taken up a lot of your time, but this recognition has been wonderful. We really appreciate the support of Mr. Mayor and the city council members. Thank you so much. This was... To be able to win the Commissioners' Cup is a true team award. And every one of these student athletes, every one of these coaches, and every one of these staff members can take a lot of credit and a lot of pride for what they've done here today, to be able to do something that's never been done in the history of Lamar University. And to be recognized for that is truly something special. So thank you very much. Go Cards.
Oh, that's okay. And next, we have a communication update from the City of Beaumont Communications Department.
Councilman Samuel, you have another song you want to sing? There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. In this week's announcements, your input is needed at our Downtown Focus Vision and Growth Community Forum. It's tomorrow at the Downtown Event Center, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It promises to be an engaging evening filled with PowerPoint presentations on the future of our downtown revitalization and development. There will also be breakout groups for focused discussion and a chance to chat directly with city staff about the issues that matter most to you. So we hope to see all of you there. The city's 9th Annual Oktoberfest is this Saturday, October 5th, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Rogers Park. Admission is free, and it's open to the public. Headlining this year's event, Houston natives, the sufferers, who actually debuted on The Letterman Show. We're also excited for the return of Kidtoberfest, which is going to have a petting zoo, free face painting, and other activities. So don't forget your lawn chair and your blanket. Come out and have a great time. Museum Madness Weekend returns October 17th. You'll have over 20 chances to visit our local museums and participate in spooky activities like eating a bug, performing a science experiment, eating in on a pumpkin scavenger hunt, and even touring a cemetery. Most of the events are free to attend. For a complete list of activities, go to beaumontcvv.com/museummadness. We're proud to announce the Beaumont Municipal Tennis Center now holds the title of 2024's best large public facility in the entire state of Texas for Texas tennis, beating out cities much larger than ours. And our very own Kaltrina Minnick is the city's personnel department, was voted Best Adult Tournament Director in Texas. These awards getting some great state recognition for our city. Get ready for thrills, chills, and everything spooky during the 13 Nights of Halloween at the Jefferson Theater. It starts tonight. You don't want to miss an unforgettable experience filled with ghostly tales, haunted houses, and bone-chilling fun. Check out what's playing and get your tickets, the cheapest ticket in town, at beaumonteventstx.com/13nightsofhalloween. And we're pleased to announce our Beaumont City Manager, Kenneth Williams, was featured in the Texas Government Insider. In this featured article, Mr. Williams shares what he likes best about being a public servant, the best advice he received, which I loved the most, and what he wishes more people knew about the city of Beaumont. You can go to the city's Facebook page and click on our post to read the entire article. And finally, and only because, our city manager asked me three times to include this in our announcements, but I would like to announce that in August, the city named a new Director of Communications. And I'm both pleased and honored to have the confidence of the city manager and of the council to fill this role. So thank you for that. And that's all for this week's announcements.
All right. For those that are here for proclamations and presentations, and you would like to leave, now's the time to do so. And I appreciate you coming, but I think most of them have left. I see Mayor Becky Ames here today. I couldn't... There were so many people here. It's good to see you. At the close of the meeting today, City Council will recess into executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Caleb Fenter versus City of Beaumont and Christopher S. Boone, calls number B21044. Now, we're going to enter public comments. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda or the regular agenda items 1 through 7, or on any other topic. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Please be reminded that myself or council cannot respond whenever you're making comments, but someone from the office will contact you.
Albert Williamson, 8765 Olvoth Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I'm Albert Williamson, 8765 Olvoth Road. I've lived here basically all of my life. Been concerned the last couple of weeks because it seems like our city's not being managed professionally. Our budget is under... Is not being presented with figures that we can trust. And we have multiple companies who are... We know are funded, just like the Beaumont Housing Authority gets funds from HUD. And so, we pay money into the federal government. They give HUD money. And so, there should be money there to pay water bills. And our water bills are extremely high. My water bill fluctuates, and this makes no sense whatsoever, from $359 at my home to $54. My water consumption does not fluctuate that much. So there's something wrong in the water department, and it needs to be addressed. And I would like to know if all of these companies, Clemah Village, Knife River, have they had liens placed against them for the money that's owed? We're taxpayers, and we should not have to pay twice to take care of the things that they should be paying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Faith Bodal, 3720 Test Street, Beaumont, Texas.
I like this desk.
Thank you.
That's perfect.
Good afternoon, City Council and others. My name is Faith Bodal. I'm at 3720 Test Street in Beaumont, Texas. And I'm here to address the homeless and housing situation, not just in our community, but also in our county and across the United States. I think that I have stumbled across a solution. I did send out an email, and I think that you each have a handout about Boxable. If you did not get my email, let me give you a little history. In 1985 and '86, my two young children and I became homeless due to a decision that was made by someone else. So we ended up in Denver, Colorado, and homeless. We stayed in the bottom of a church one night, slept in our pickup truck many nights, and ate at a food kitchen many days. My children took a boxed lunch of a ham and cheese sandwich and an apple for their lunch at school. That was what was handed out at the shelter. And a cup of coffee and a donut for breakfast. Hardly the breakfast of champions. While my homelessness was short-lived, thank you, Jesus, the experience is long-lasting. And I just want to tell you that each individual out there has their own story as to why they became homeless. Them are due to someone else's decision. Some of them are due to their own choices. And some of them are due to addiction and/or sickness or mental illness. There are just myriad, as many people out there. There are that many different stories. In 2004, my husband and I both lost our mothers. And today, I'm honoring them with my mother's pin. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry. The time is...
Pin for my mother.
Thank you.
And breast cancer for my mother-in-law.
Yes, ma'am. We limit comments to three minutes. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm terribly sorry I took up all that time, but in the handout...
Thank you. You can leave that with the handout.
It's at your desk.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I did it.
Oh, okay. He muted it. Thank you.
William Johnson, 1045 Madison Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor, Council, City of Beaumont. William Johnson, 1045 Madison Street, Beaumont, Texas. My complaint is still the same. I got a complaint against Chase Bank. I started working with Chase Bank on 2021. I went in there and opened an account up, and I found out my account was... My debit card was getting ripped off by one or two people. I took it to the bank, and the bank said it must be one of your old girlfriends. I don't have any of those anymore. On the 2nd and the 8th of 2024, I went to my bank. As soon as I walked in the door, my bank president handed me these vouchers. One for $500. I was on the 1st and the 16th of '24, that I didn't do. And another one here on the 12th and the 8th, '23, that was the last three years. I didn't get that until '24. I have another one here for... 1st and the 25th of '24 for $700. And I got another one here for the 1st and the 30th of '24 for $900. I went to my bank, and I questioned my... I was asking my president of my bank about it, and she told me... What did she tell me? Oh, I got another one. I have some more checks coming next month. I'm complaining about these checks, which was written in my name, that I didn't do. And I'm questioning her about my account, and she's telling me about... I got a... I should have another check coming this month. That's like on the 3rd of 2024. I was talking about the checks that was written from the 1st of 20... 1st of 2024 up until... I had a debit card. Got a debit card from the bank. I found out two or three other people have had the debit card. I got a whole bunch of charges on my debit card that I didn't make. I talked to my bank about it. She tells me that it must be your old girlfriend. I told her I was really out of that fear for coating and girlfriends because I have already been kind of like knocked down and cast down by girlfriends. I'm seeking my money. The bank president's supposed to be in charge... In fact, any president over a group of people or management is supposed to be in charge of it. This president of this bank tells me that we don't owe you nothing. I got... And on top of that, I'm telling her about even the checks that they was writing or wrote. People wrote the checks and didn't even got the I on waiting. I'm seeking help.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor West, Mr. Williamson, Council. It's... My name's Charlie Crabbe. I live at 928 East Drive, right down Harrison Street, if you want to come by sometime. Come to the back door because I can't hear the front door anymore. It's another nice day in Beaumont, our town. Summer temperature is starting to cool. It is a time we can enjoy the outdoor activities. It was nice to see the Lamar Athletes' Day. That was quite a showing. And I hope the city will show more support for Lamar University and have them parade their band down the street here and on Main Street. The Police Department is doing a bang-up job bringing murderers and thieves to jail. We definitely have to have too many incidents of crime. It is... Is it a sign of the time? All the other city departments are also functioning very nice. Herskine Helena has devastated the people from Upper Florida to North Carolina. North Carolina has been devastated with that rainwater coming out of the mountains down the stream. It's unbelievable. These people need immediate help for locals and... From locals and the government, we can help by donating to charities that are helping. The Israelis are showing the world how to handle a group that wants to try and eliminate their country. Israel has killed a large group of Hezbollah terrorist group leaders. The amount of rockets and missiles Hezbollah has stored below apartment buildings in Lebanon is unbelievable, putting people in immediate danger of death. The U.S. and EU must continue to assist Israel with money and armament. Ukrainians are still keeping Putin and Russia from running over their country. The U.S. and EU must continue to assist Ukraine with money and armament. The debate by the Vice President on Channel 12, ABC, should be interesting to watch and listen to tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Thanks for listening.
Daniel Campisi, 2095 Dowell Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor West, City Council members. I'm here today to discuss an issue causing measurable harm to the youth in our city, interference with child custody. Bill 969 passed by the Texas Legislature in 2023 provides Beaumont with a new legal tool to address situations where a parent unlawfully interferes with court order visitations. This bill allows cities to impose civil fines of up to $500 in addition to existing criminal penalties such as felony charges and jail time. Without Beaumont adopting HB 969 as an ordinance, interference with child custody will remain only a criminal offense for parents who continue these acts. Unfortunately, Beaumont has the lowest criminal enforcement rates in Texas for this issue. Today, I'll explain why adopting HB 969 is vital for our community and how it will create lasting chains for our children, families, and future generations. Since 2019 of September, the Beaumont Police Department has documented 1,213 confirmed incidents of custody interference. Yet, only 72 criminal reports were generated, and shockingly, not a single case was forwarded to the prosecutor's office. Families affected by custody interference rely on law enforcement, but all filed reports were closed, leading to zero accountability for the criminals involved. This disturbing reality shows that Beaumont's legal mechanisms to protect its citizens from these violations are failing or actively refusing to act. This reality should deeply concern our community. How can we allow these statistics to persist while felony actions go unpunished, tearing apart the lives of our youth? The Texas Legislature has recognized these failures in addressing custody interference and has passed House Bill 969, highlighting that felony charges alone are insufficient deterrents. As Beaumont approaches 2024, As Beaumont approaches 2025, we must prioritize protecting our youth and strengthening families. Other cities have already implemented House Bill 969, providing their law enforcement with the necessary tools to tackle ongoing custody violations. My proposal is straightforward. If Beaumont fails to adopt House Bill 969 as an ordinance, the city will not have the ability to issue civil citations of up to $500 for these violations. In that case, Beaumont is saying we are complicit in tolerating these crimes and allowing them to go unpunished. As we approach the next city meeting, I challenge this council with a question. Why should Beaumont remain in the shadows while other cities take bold and decisive action to secure a better future for their generations? I implore this council to place my proposal on the agenda for a future meeting and vote to adopt House Bill 969 into our city's code.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Melissa Bronson.
This is Melissa Bradford, address 1085 Washington, D.C. I want to discuss these safety concerns that has taken place has not worsened since Judge Baylor Weldon has directed a district clerk to pay $37,051 of my stolen funds that he put into the register of the court two years ago. And it's been having me in litigation, defending myself for the past two years. Every time I hire an attorney or attempt to, it's like they're being bought off or intimidated against. And I have proof from the last attorney who stated that his email... Well, not his email, um... His calendar was hacked for the week. And it was very well documented what he said. So I want to discuss these emails from these lawyers, two different lawyers, as well as a U.S. marshal person who was trying to get into my hearing, and Judge Baylor Weldon blocked him. The public has a right to be informed about this criminal activity, illegal actions that's been happening with my case. And then I'm being followed around nearly everywhere I go. I've already emailed the mayor the photos of particular white men following me around, taking my pictures, one of them in particular. And I called the police, reported harassment and possibly threats, and they just continued to ignore me. And I have the evidence of one policeman in particular who wouldn't even take my report. This happened like on three different occasions. I don't understand why these criminal activities continue to go unchecked. I mean, there's so many crimes happening, I would say only among people of color because I get a lot of phone calls where people are telling me they're dealing with the same issues. I've been in the library working on my case. People come approach me, asking me if I'm an attorney because they're needing help. We've been to the city council. I mean, they're not helping us. This is what's been told to me. You know, so, I mean, something has to change here. These... The text messages from these lawyers. They're saying they can't get into the hearing. They kept trying. They couldn't get in. They wanted to get familiar with my case. They're telling me we need to get into a couple of these hearings to see what's really going on because this is no the case. And they see, you know, the documents. They're like, you know, this is an easy win case because this judge don't even have subject matter jurisdiction over your case. This case was sent to arbitration in 2021 by Judge Mitch Timberton. I showed y'all the hearing transcripts. They're colliding in a fraudulent scheme, talking about how they're gonna make my situation worse, like Judge Timberton was taught after law school. That's what he said. So for the past three weeks, I've been joining these different Facebook group pages. And after the second post, people are just outraged. They're like, "I hope you reported this, Judge. He needs to be in trouble for what he's doing." This is an orchestrated crime being committed to this issue.
Thank you.
Daniel Russo, 8670 Ducot Road, Salisbury, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmen. I had moved down here from Kansas to be with my son and my grandkids, and I have since tried to set up a food truck. I'm kind of getting harassed by the Health Department. I am located on College and Fort Street. Okay, we're off the road, and we're being harassed, saying that we are not allowed to park there overnight. Meanwhile, if you go up and down College Street, there is no less than eight trucks that are parked there overnight. I'm the only one getting violations. I am also the only one that has his health certificate and his health grade on the front of my food truck. So I'm trying to understand the harassment that I'm getting. They mentioned the fact in regard to waste disposal. I'd gone out and spent $1,700 on a separator that takes the wastewater and the oil from the food truck. Okay? Then we brought up the incident of electricity, okay? I went ahead and filled out a form, hired an electrician, spent $3,200 running a wire to a junction box for the safety of kids and anybody else that might run things over. I'm doing everything that I'm supposed to be doing, but yet I feel I'm the only one that's being harassed, which I'm quite not understanding. I've been nothing but compliant. It's pretty simple. Why am I being harassed when all of these trucks, and I've got pictures of seven trucks that aren't even open for lunch, that are parked in their site overnight? And I happen to rent a vacant lot from somebody with my truck attached to my food truck? Okay, my food truck is 22 feet long. I am obviously not in any position. My shoulder, I fell off the truck. My shoulder is broken in three spots. So it is impossible for me to move this truck. How do I remedy this? Here's my question. I feel like I'm getting singled out. Is it my New York accent? I don't know. I mean, if anybody could lead me to something else. I mean, I have a waste on the site here, okay? Where I go and depay and get rid of my water. It's Sam Southern Eatery, right down the block from College. And like I said, I have this waste container which I spent almost $1,000 on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And not one, but two violations.
Thelma Fielder, 2975 Grand Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening. I came because I have some property on Mike Know You. And it was a while before I went back up there as an apartment. And this... All I know the man's name is Richard. And when I went up there to see what was going on, they building a halfway house with the, uh... The alley is the... Is what I use for a yard or driveway to go to the apartment. If you come up Mike Know You, my car drag, I have to be in the truck custody driveway is so hot. So I went and asked the man... I asked the man when I walked up there. I said, "What you doing here? You don't own this property. City own it." I said, "You're not supposed to put no... No plumbing here for a commode, and you've got all them built, all them rooms there. You won't be able to even stay in the porch for the sewage line." He said, "I don't give a damn." He say, "This is city's property. It's not yours." I said, "Well, I'm not here to argue with you. I'm not here to..." "But I just want to know, why did you put the sewage line in the alley?" "'Cause I was told you're supposed to have a permit before you put a sewage line in the alley." And I left. I took some pictures. He had the sewage line. He had it... He had put it down there. He had it covered up. And when he saw me taking pictures, then he uncovered it, but I still can't go to the apartment on through the alley 'cause he got it blocked out. He not dug the dirt up, piled it up, and got the sewage line open. And I came and I talked to the city about it, and they said, "Well, maybe you ought to take that up with the city council before you do it, taking your legal action." And when I talked to them, they couldn't even pull it up on the computer 'cause he didn't get a permit. And I always was told, "If you're gonna go on the city property, you're supposed to have a permit." And that's why I'm here 'cause my son has got out there, rust, and he need a place to stay. And I need the plumbing fixed. I'm working on the apartment for him to come back home. But with the sewage line there, I wouldn't even want to... I wouldn't want to stay there myself.
Thank you, ma'am.
But I do have pictures for y'all to see what I'm talking about.
You can leave them right there. Yes, ma'am.
Vivian Blue, 3030 Plaza Circle, Port Arthur, Texas. Oh, you want public hearing? That's all we have then, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. At this point, we're going to recess for about three minutes. We need to reset our sound system because there's a reverberation in it. So they have to turn it off and turn it back on. So three minutes, we don't need to run off.
Can we do for five? It's just gonna take... The reboot is gonna take about three minutes.
We'll do five minutes, so 2:17. Is that correct? All right. So at this point, we're going to look for approval of the consent agenda, but we are going to exclude item I because that contract has not been completed yet, so that'll... We'll look to bring that back. So can we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda except for item I?
Move to approve except I.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. On item E, I would say roughly about page 76. An initial agreement at the end, it has the dates. Option 1, September 1, 2025; 2, August 31, 2026. Are the two options, is it just basically the extension of the timeline? Yeah, just want to make sure.
I think Angie stepped out, but yes, it's just a... This is a renewal to an existing agreement.
Okay. I just want to make sure those options are strictly to timeline. I'm sorry, Angie. Okay. Well, on page... Well, on item E, I would say page 76. I seen the initial agreement. It was multiple options. I just want to make sure those options only consisted of timelines. Okay, I just want to be sure. Okay, thank you. And one more question, ma'am. Not in reference to this one. Item I, I see we...
We're not gonna...
I'm sorry. Not item I, item F.
All right.
I noticed that we sent it out to over 100, and I see only one responded. I know we've kind of been discussing our bid process. Can we kind of... Thank you, Mark.
This is a little different. This is a lot that is isolated behind this one residence house. It has no access from any city street. So really, anybody else bidding... So really anybody else bidding on it wouldn't be able to make use of the property very easily since it's landlocked in around. It's on Russ Street and the gentleman's house who bid on it, the property is between him and the rail. It's some woods back behind there. And it's just a kind of an odd deal. The city acquired it in 1938. And the family at that time sold due to lack of access to an unimproved right of way. So we've been holding on to it since 1938. So we're trying to get it off the books.
I saw someone got a unique situation, not what we standardly deal with.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor.
I was tabled as move in the agenda.
Item one, council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and submit the intent to apply with the Texas Water Development Board, TWDB. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to accept maintenance and authorize found payment to TRP Construction Group LLC for the citywide payment markings face three project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Moved by Councilman Getz, seconded by Councilman Samuel. There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have a reading of item number three, please?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Vortex Companies for the Belvedere Drive and Clinton Street Stormwater Outfall Emergency Repair Project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we please have the reading of item number four?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to C-Tex Construction Corp. Beaumont, Texas for the North Major Drive and Westfield Avenue exploratory excavation and senator sewer repair contract. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number four?
So moved to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
I know our engineer's estimate was slightly lower. Was that an old estimate or was that something recent?
No, it's a current estimate. What this is, is there's a cavity forming on this line. And due to the depth and the fact that the sewer line remains charged, the vast majority of the time, we've been unable to televise and figure out where the defect is. So this contracts to award to the vendor to go and dig it out all the way down to that 10 inch line, 18 feet deep. And then to figure out what the defect is and then repair that defect if it's on the 10 inch line, which we suspect. I do want to point out though, that if there is an issue with the 54 inch line, this contract won't cover it. We'll have to readdress it at that time.
But we won't find out basically until they go down.
Until we go all 18 feet down and take a look at it. Yes, sir.
All right. Good, we get an address, but hopefully it's nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Durya?
Well, I just want to, what's the reason for that? That bid amount of $350,000 is so much more than the rest of them. Does that include if you find something else wrong or would you know?
It, all of them should have bid, assuming that it would include a repair on the 10 inch line and excluding the 54. But no, I don't have an explanation as to why theirs was so incredibly high. I can only guess they had a lot of amount of work and only wanted this if they were going to make a lot of money.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five?
Council to consider an ordinance denying Texas Gas Service Company proposed rates. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the city of Beaumont's application for the fiscal year 2024 pathways to remove obstacles to housing, pro housing grant.
All right, I open the public hearing.
Vivian Blue, 3030 Plaza Circle, Port Arthur, Texas.
Counseling agencies in southeast Texas. Over the past 15 years, Legacy has provided homebuyer education and certification for over 1,500 families. In 2023, Legacy provided financial counseling service to 811 persons and homebuyer specific sessions to 494 families. We also assisted 11 low to moderate income homebuyers on closing homes in Beaumont. In many cases, we worked with a family up to two years to get them ready for homeownership. I've provided you with a copy of our accomplishments. After reviewing the application, I would like to ask the city not forget about the nonprofit organizations who have carried out the city's mission and served as an arm of the city in achieving its annual HUD goals. I believe that it would benefit the city and strengthen the application to set aside capacity building funding specifically for nonprofit organizations. We have worked in communities, developed homes and created homeownership opportunities when there was little or no funding. And we will be here to continue those efforts after the pro grant funding is expended. Investing in community organizations allows them to be less dependent on city funding and assist them in being self-sufficient so that they can operate and compete for properties against investors and for-profit developers. Most for-profit developers do not need capacity building and do not see affordable housing as being profitable. As a 35-year veteran of HUD programs, I understand that this funding is a once in a lifetime opportunity for the city to make a real dent in the affordable housing market. The need for affordable housing is great and increases yearly based on increasing insurance, taxes and the cost of construction. We simply ask that a set aside be carved out to allow the city's partners, community partners and nonprofits to continue their works and to flourish and not compete against for-profit developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the work session, please?
Okay, Mayor. Council to the Lord Nature's Valley Authority, L-N-V-A agreement, along with the bill for water use during the drought.
Good afternoon. So I want to walk through our relationship, our agreement with the L-N-V-A and how we operate to ensure that there's water available for the city of Beaumont in times of drought. So we, we signed an agreement with L-N-V-A back in 2013 to account for using water in excess of our water rights during periods of high demand or low river levels. So we have the ability to pull up to 50 million gallons a day off of the river, but that's if the water exists in the river. So where L-N-V-A comes in is assisting us in being able to release water from the reservoirs to ensure that water's there for us to be able to make use of. The annual costs to the city of Beaumont are a reservation fee where we're reserving a certain amount of acre feet that we can pull from those reservoirs in times of need. Then the usage as we need within our reservation fee. So within the amount we've reserved, we have an amount of a rate for that water that's guaranteed by contract over a five-year agreement. It don't, it will not change during those five years. And then our excess usage, which is any usage above and beyond what we've reserved. And that rate changes yearly. So I'm going to throw a lot of numbers at you, bear with me, but we'll walk through this. So in light of the drought that we had recently, we went and we looked at the city's water usage over the period from 2010 to current. And we looked at what we used, what we had to release and what we paid. So looking at this chart, the top of each of these lines notes the highest one-year cost we could expect for a given contract volume. So if you look at the line on the furthest left, this is our current reservation amount, 6,000 acre feet with L-N-V-A. So in times of drought and then what we used was the average or the usage we had over those last 12, 13 years. So the peak would have been 2011. That was the worst drought the city experienced. So if you had a drought of that magnitude and you have 6,000 acre feet, you can expect to spend almost $1.8 million even with your reservation. The lowest you would spend is, is the bottom of these bars and that's our reservation rate. So if we don't use any water from L-N-V-A, we still pay our reservation fee each year. And then the line in the middle is the average annual cost we could expect at each of these reservation rates if conditions match what we've seen from 2010 to 2023 on average. So we looked at this and we evaluated what, what would be the sweet spot for the city of Beaumont in terms of how much water we should reserve on any given year. And what we came to is to increase from 6,000 acre feet to 8,500 acre feet. And I'll walk through that in these, in these next slides. So if we turn the page, thank you, Demi. One more back. So this takes the 8,500 acre feet that we're proposing. And it looks at what we experienced from the years 2010 to 2023. So your blue bar on each of these years is your reservation fee. So every single year, we're going to pay our reservation fee no matter what. The green of the bar is if we had to release water, but it was within the reservation amount that we've contracted with L-N-V-A. And then the yellow is the excess release fee that we'd have to pay. So you can see our heavy drought years were 2011 and 2023. And in the case of 2011, we would be just under 1.2 million. In 2023, we would be just below 600,000 with a reservation rate of 8,500 acre feet. It's a balance because what we're doing is we're paying insurance basically. So if we don't have a drought year, we don't need a release. We're still paying our reservation fee. But by paying that, we're trying to moderate against these peak usage times during the years of drought. One more page. So our recommendation and this, this chart has an error. This shouldn't say 2023 fees. It should say the average from 2010 to 2023. Currently, we reserve 6,000 acre feet. We pay $26.88 per acre foot. So we're paying a reservation fee of $161,280 each and every year to have the ability to release water. The average over all these years has us releasing about $63,000 and paying in excess of 162, which gives you an average annual, any given year of 387. To go to 8,500, we'll pay more for reservation each year, 228, 480. The release within the amount we've reserved would be 73. And we moderate or minimize the excess release and drop that to 59,000. So our average each year drops from that 387 to 361. So we pay a little more insurance, reserve a little more water and moderate against those times when we have the drought. And I know back in 2020, one of the questions was, why are we reserving water? We hadn't actually tapped it in, in quite a while. So this, this last slide is very busy. But just to give you an idea, going back to 2000, these are drought scores for those years. So you can see that despite the fact that we have quite a bit of water in southeast Texas, we are going to experience years of drought. And you are going to have to release water at times in order to be able to pull water off the river and meet our, our citizens' needs. So I also have Scott Hall here from L-N-V-A, who's the general manager. If you have any questions of me or of him from, from L-N-V-A, we'd be glad to field them.
Any questions? Councilman Durya?
On this last chart, why is 2024 so high? I would imagine that last year's drought was.
Well, that's going 2023 into 2024. So that's really the 2023 drought. And the bar before that's really 2022, which was fairly dry, but really didn't hit us as hard as, as the actual drought in 2023.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's why.
You did an excellent job.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hall, thank you for being here. Good to see you. All right. And before we proceed with regular agenda, item six, I know our kiosk wasn't working. Is there anybody that signed up for the public hearing that didn't register? Okay, at that point, I'm going to go ahead and move forward with reading for item number six, Mr. City Manager.
Council can, council consider, my mic could go up. Consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an updated water supply agreement and mutual release between the city of Beaumont and the Lord Nature's Valley Authority, L-N-V-A, providing updates to the current five-year term agreement, which secures an uninterrupted surface water supply for the city of Beaumont. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the reading of item number seven?
Council consider resolution authorizing payment of Lord Nature's Valley Authority, L-N-V-A invoice number 3049 for the 2023 water release fee. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. All right, now we're moving into council member comments. Record time. Councilman Neal?
No, I have no comment, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Samuel? Councilman Felschall?
Thank you, Mayor. Our health director reminded me that today is the first day of flu season. He encouraged me and everyone else to get your flu shot. So let's go out and take care of our business. So there you go, Mr. Director. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Turner.
Just want to congratulate one of our very own, Katrina Mickens, on the award that she received as well as our city, one of the best tennis facilities in Texas. I know, Mike, you take a lot of pride in that. And I think it's a great thing to kind of highlight us when we are doing well in particular areas. Another thing I want to shout out to an organization called Men of Purpose. We were able to take right at seventy student male athletes to see a movie on this Sunday. And this movie was called The Forge. So if you ever have the opportunity to watch this movie, it's a great movie for young men to go see with either their fathers or other family members or just men, period. It's a good family movie, a good family film to watch. And this movie was very inspirational and some of the things that's going on in our young men in the community today, I think is extremely important. We take time out, volunteer on, volunteer with them, love on them, pray for them, and just help them make better decisions in life. So I just want to shout out the organization. Everybody's doing a great job in the community, just want to keep up the good work.
Councilman, thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Getz.
I want to echo Councilmember Turner's comments regarding Katrina Minnick. She ran the Labor Day Tennis Tournament this past year and did an incredible job and has been able to get the tournament boosted up a level, which will be really big in terms of participation next year, in terms of people coming in to play in the tournament. She just does a very excellent job. And also on the facility itself, being named the best municipal tennis facility in the entire state of Texas, beating out cities like Waco, Dallas, Houston, is an amazing accomplishment. And none of that would have been possible, I don't believe, without the efforts of my late wife, Allison, who was president of the Southeast Texas Tennis Association at the time, all of this came to pass. And she and Claude Guidros and Emily Cox did a tremendous job of lobbying the city to get the improvements made that has allowed us to enjoy the rewards we seek today. Oktoberfest this Saturday, it's the ninth annual. It may be the first one I miss. I have a wedding to go to in Houston that evening. I'm going to try to drop by briefly for a few minutes, but instead of leader hosing, I might be wearing a tux, I don't know. But hopefully, everybody will get out to go to Oktoberfest and hopefully the weather will be as nice as it has been lately. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Duryo.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, I was able to attend my first beam raising for the new Baptist Hospital Cancer Center right there at thirty-one eighty College Street. It's a, like a forty-million-dollar project, forty-two thousand square foot facility. Would help with patients. I know this personally from having to drive back and forth to Houston for your radiation or chemotherapy treatments. They'll be able to do it right here in Beaumont. So that would help out a lot of folks, and it just happens to be in Ward Four. So that's a great thing, too. And also on the flu shot, I also saw that they're telling folks, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coleman, that when they go in to get their flu shot, they could also get their COVID booster. So just to piggyback on that, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Adam, city attorney.
No comment.
Mr. President, this is the city manager, Ben.
Yes, Mayor, just again, a quick plug for tomorrow evening's Downtown Focus Vision and Growth at the Downtown Event Center tomorrow, six to eight.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, a few quick notes. I mentioned the tennis facility last meeting, so I beat AJ and Mike to that last week.
Yes, you did.
So it was a great, great facility, great tournament out there. I want to commend the city of Beaumont, and cannot forget, we're going to receive the scenic city award this week, next week at TML. We're going to move up in status to what is civil status, which means we are improving our status as a scenic city. That'd be great. For all of anyone's who's there, we encourage you to come by the ceremony and participate in, in that event and that photo opportunity with the state of Texas. It's awesome. And I had the pleasure of inviting a lot of my high school classmates to Beaumont last week. I want to thank our CBB department, Freddie Willard, and for the fantastic work they did and showed people. You know, we went to Riverside Grill on Friday night. They took us to Cat Town March and have had an event Saturday. It was quite the event with the people coming in. It's good for them to see Beaumont and what Beaumont has to offer, and they were quite impressed. So I thank CBB for the outstanding work that they did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Well, he forgot to mention the calendar of events. I thought you were going to do that. Well, now I got to talk. There's several things that are going on in the city of Beaumont in the month of October, and our CBB has put together a wonderful calendar. So I encourage everyone to visit their Facebook page or their website to see all the things that have gone on in the month of October.
Beaumont is booming. That's exactly right. And I just, I know many of us are proud Lamar University graduates, and it was a pleasure seeing all the student athletes here. And that all conference for the athletic, it reflects their winning schedule, but it also reflects their academics. And they've done an incredible job. Lamar football is still ranked in the top twenty-five with FCS. So I'm expecting an opportunity in the playoffs. And their next game is homecoming on October twelfth, which will be their first conference game. I would like to get a review of that House Bill nine sixty-nine to see if this is something our city needs to explore further about child custody. I had the privilege last week of going with several people from the county, as well as our police chief, over to Harris County Juvenile Probation to their detention center and their day center that Mrs. Regina Rogers organized. And the county judge, as well as county commissioners, went over there, and it was very impressive. We, seeing the facilities, we also had some testimonials from some of the people that went through the system, as well as the people that have worked in juvenile justice in Harris County for over thirty years. And the one thing, they have gone in the last ten years from a punitive system to a rehabilitation system. And their statistics are really very impressive. You cannot ignore them. It is, it is a transition, but it is making a significant impact in their juvenile crime in Harris County. And I know that Jefferson County will be looking at it. And I think as the council, although we don't have any direct involvement in being aware of it and the impact it can have on, and our, on the challenges that we have with youth crime in terms of addressing that in a manner that helps solve the problem. And tomorrow, there is also the ribbon cutting at Rogers Park that Magnolia Garden Club put that beautiful sign in, and that's going to be at eleven AM for those that can attend and to follow on what Councilman Duryo said about the beam raising. The Mason family here that has been so supportive, they donated two and a half million dollars towards that, which is very impressive. And with that, yes.
On the review of House Bill six nine six, are you asking that to be a work session or?
Yes.
Something, a work session. Got it.
And now we'll recess into executive session.